Six fifty-nine Julie.
Alright everybody, I got seven o'clock so we're gonna go ahead and get started. We'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, number three, motion to declare an open meeting, some move second?
Second.
Okay, move to second to declare open to meeting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number four, notification, the open meetings act is posted on the door in the back of the room. Number five, roll call. Chance?
Yep.
Kayden?
Here.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Self here, Justin?
Present.
Listen.
Yep.
Okay, number six, approve the agenda. Uh, we've got one request to move number sixteen, teammates mentoring up to after number nine, public comment. So, Catherine, maybe get out of here a little bit.
Feed my head.
If that's okay with everybody. May that change?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the change.
I'll second that.
Move second to approve the agenda with that one change. Number sixteen of the number nine. And those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Number seven, we're gonna consult the agenda, starting with the minutes from the last one. Special for the secondary meetings on the twenty-eighth to?
It's on that last page, it's on the page report financials.
Questions on the minutes or anything, uh, we go to the financial reports?
I just would bring your attention to the, the back page of your first page of your financials that shows, uh, month, the month, the month. So, one month left in this fiscal, so as we look at where we're at per percent of budget spend, so I projected even if we were to have our highest general fund expense of the year, we're still hovering at about ninety percent of budget spend. So, um, in great shape, uh, I made, I made a notification to Midwest Bank to go ahead and, um, spend that extra hundred thousand dollars that you budgeted, uh, for that CD in this fiscal year because you've got room in your general fund budget. So, that should show in next month that your CD balances back up to, uh, back up to a million dollars.
On the, that consent stuff, the only thing I, there's a mistake because the twenty-eight, two guy, two Kayden and Justin were here. It says that they answered the roll call.
Yeah, I could guess. Thanks, James.
That's because Darren was taking the question. Dismissed. Or excused.
We'll make that correction.
It was Kayden, did you say?
Yeah, I wasn't here.
I wasn't here either.
Who was it? Okay, Justin.
Any more questions on the financial reports? If not, we'll take a look at the claims.
We will have another batch of claims, um, for the last meeting of the month because all of the sped has to be paid by our fiscal year end, which is August thirty-first. So I, we still have yet to receive the issue aid bill, which I'm guessing would be close to a hundred thousand. And I'll have Dr. Alt probably look through what else we've got sitting in the hopper before the end of the month. We will run one more batch that I will bring for the last meeting of the month.
Risk is the AI, well, correct. So the dinner, do we? This'll be our first full year.
Yep.
We pilot that in spring.
We started in January, what, yeah? Your phone systems seem to be working okay.
Yeah, we're still kinda working through that, Tom's preparing, uh, you know, precise, all the, you know, who might need to contact who and, uh, we'll work with that through teachers. And then as needed, so, yeah, it's done, we've got our bell system activated today, so we'll have a tone in our bell system. And that operates separately, uh, from the phone, so, uh, that's, you know, the quasi temporary and permanent solution until we have the issued facilities.
Okay, well, if there are any other questions there, we'll take a motion into approve of consent agenda.
Consent as presented.
I'll second that. Move to second to approve the present agenda, that's present, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
For those who know, motion carried. Number eight, celebration of excellence, anything tonight?
Um, no, I don't unless Mr. Schmidt, you have anything or anybody who, I don't know, since last week, so. Nothing for number eight tonight.
Uh, number nine, public comment, is there anybody who wants to speak tonight?
I would like to speak tonight.
I gotta read my.
Okay.
Statement here. Uh, we're now at the portion of our agenda set aside for public comment. Each person wishing to address the board will be recognized by the board president, must stand and state your name. Allow up to five minutes to speak and only one opportunity to do so. Please remember, this meeting, a planning vote, schools, board of educations, held in public and comments or conduct allude of seen, profane, slander, strutting, or hostile will not be tolerated. Be further advised that there's no legal protection if any comments are made. Public comments an opportunity for patrons to express their concern or support for school business. Public comments not an opportunity to open dialogue with the board while in open session. Board members will listen and take comments under advisement. Patrons are encouraged to follow board policy if they have a concern about personnel or school operations. Go ahead.
Thank you, I wrote my comments, so I will be reading these so I can get through the points, um, fast. Hi, my name is Jen Kraus, my husband Jim and I own land and are taxpayers for the district. We are both retired teachers having taught in the area of ag, woods, science, and music. Our four sons graduated from Pliny U being active in all aspects of academics, extracurricular activities, and athletics. So we are very interested in the proposed plans for an addition to the school and especially interested in what is being offered for ag, music, woods, and science departments. In looking at the various proposed plans, I have noticed the third gym- gymnasium and the wrestling practice areas seem to be strategically planned and placed and the rest of the needed classroom space maybe not as much. You as a school board and your various committees for this project have an obligation to the taxpayers to quote, "get it right" since these type of projects don't come around very often. We have not had this large of a building expansion for nearly fifty years, so I ask you to take time to look closely at the plans, make changes as necessary before you present to the public for a bond issue vote. I questioned some of the classroom placement. I would think since library, music, and art are being used by both buildings, these rooms might be more placed centrally between the buildings to alleviate travel time, especially for the elementary kids. But I see such as not the case since the music area is basically in the same place as it is now. I've also noticed the vocal music room is next to a welding area. I'm wondering if they will even be able to hear if there is a welding class going on with the pounding, grinding, and so forth going on. I question the size of some of these spaces, such as the welding area, the band and vocal music room. Are we allowing enough space, do we provide for growth? Is it even close to the space we offer now for our students? I'm wondering what we are doing to enhance our performance area for music students as well as speech and drama students. Are there any changes being made to this area? Being an agriculture community, we have a lot of our students who will not be four-year college students and instead going to the community colleges for hands-on technical training. Wouldn't it be awesome if other students from our area decided to opt into our school system because we offered a technical program with outstanding facilities for ag, woods, welding, and even family consumer science? We also have several teachers who are approaching early retirement age. Will our facility attract new teachers coming for the area of speech and drama, ag, family consumer sciences, just to name a few? Remember, we are a class D school and in these areas of teaching, there are a lot of opportunities all over the state. These teachers will consider their classroom and performance areas when choosing a job. So I challenge you as board members to provide opportunities in academic areas for our students first, maybe even ahead of offering a new sports gymnasium. We also feel it is unnecessary at this time to spend seventy-some thousand dollars for a new practice football field when first and foremost, you as board members probably want your patrons to support a bond issue and you have already committed to pavement assessments. This community has done well to provide for the athletic needs of our students, past and present. So we ask you to first think academics in this building expansion. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Thanks, Jen. Yeah, all those things are gonna be, you know, addressed in the next coming months, if you're sure. Anyone else wanna speak tonight? Okay, seeing no one, uh, we'll move on to that number sixteen action item. That was discussed and take a possible action on the board of education sponsorship of teammates mentoring program.
Was I just here? Yes, I was. First of all, I wanna thank the board for your support. Our program is growing by leaps and bounds and, and it's a good program. And, um, I'd like to first of all introduce Melissa Tar. She has willingly volunteered to be on our board. I don't get that too often, I mean, I'm Zack Twist Arms, and she came to us. So, she's a vital member of our new, uh, board, the new picture of what our board looks like. And Melissa Hubbard has also been a willing volunteer to the board. You could make it tonight, but I just wanted to let you know, if you have teammate questions, here's a lady you can talk to, she's very much in the know as to what goes on. And I'd like to thank Dr. Alt and Mrs. Hodgson for their administrative support to our program. You are always so very helpful. Jen's full of ideas to help me get communication and use of facilities and I really, really appreciate your time and energies. Our stats for the end of the year, we had thirty-eight mentees and thirty mentors in our program. And, and if you put all that together, we had six hundred and eighteen times that mentors and mentees met together. That's pretty awesome. So, it's over twenty times, uh, per unit. So i- it's, it's a good thing. We have eleven, we had eleven elementary mentees, fourteen junior high mentees, and thirteen high school mentees. And we only graduated one senior. I'm six and a graduate. We have two, uh, two young ladies that will be seniors this year. Uh, we're looking forward to a new school year, I already have people saying, "I want my kid to be in the program." And, um, we're always looking for.
Yes.
New mentors and new board people and people have been very receptive and very, very kind. So thank you very much for your support in the past, it's appreciated.
Thank you for the work you do with the kids, too, you're up here about every day, I think.
Well, usually two or three days a week, but I love it.
The time I'm here.
I love it, you know, like, no, no lesson plans, no papers to grade, just working with kids and I, I love it, so. My pleasure.
So we've been doing a thousand dollars for the last three years for teammates. We had the discussion of that, or you feel like you have enough funds for what you wanna do?
To belong to teammates, our membership alone to belong to teammates last year was seven hundred and fifty dollars. And as our program goes, that money, that membership fee goes up. Uh, and a lot of it has to do with liability and you know about liability insurance. They have talked about, "Well, this, forego teammates and do it on our own," and I'm going, no. You could not afford the liability insurance to cover the program and make sure that, uh, we are protected. So, um, yeah, it i- it's a kind of a stiff thing and like I say, as we get more kids, it'll most likely go up. So, we were managed, we managed to, we did fine, you know, financially, we did, we did great. So, we appreciate the thousand dollars.
I think we can do better.
I think so, too.
I do, too. Is it a limiting, is it a limiting factor? I have them just a thousand dollars?
No.
No, we'd be up to, I think, five hundred at the time.
We started out, when I first began, at five hundred and then you generously changed it to a thousand.
And this is a free program for the kids?
Oh, definitely. And, you know, our first activity is the volleyball game on the sixteenth of September and we'll have root beer floats, um, we took them bowling in May, they absolutely love going bowling. Then we went to Osmond, but we feed them, you know, we, we do all of that for them. We provide T-shirts for them and.
Gift bags, we give back to school gift bags.
We have also gift bags ready to go for them when they come back into the building. So we, we, we're very proactive as far as making, you know, little things and taking care of them.
How about we do fifteen hundred?
So that's something.
Yeah, fifteen hundred.
Nothing gets cheaper.
No.
We've been a thousand for three years.
Yep. Let's go fifteen hundred. Yep, I'll make a motion, uh, they're wording right here, correct. I'll make a motion to budget fifteen hundred dollars to support Pliny Public Schools teammates mentoring program.
I'll second.
Okay, move to second to, uh, budget fifteen hundred dollars to support Pliny Public Schools teammates mentoring program. Any discussion? Not, we'll vote, Melissa?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Self, yes, Wyatt?
Yes.
Uh, Kate?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Make motion carried, six oh?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for.
Do it 'cause we like it.
Alright, we'll get back to, uh, discussion ads and starting with, uh, number ten. The request for proposal and the construction manager selection process.
So just kind of a notification, uh, for you, um, those will be due and those folks will come in and deliver them to me. I've received, you know, some, some good communication with, with several CMs beyond even those that were here on the walkthrough a couple of weeks ago. Uh, so there are a lot of, very interested, uh, reputable construction managing companies uh, in this project, uh, for sure. So those will be due the nineteenth, CM selection committee. Uh, and Mr. Rasmussen, do you wanna confirm, uh, who that is, that's our building ground?
Yeah, Kate, Wyatt, myself, Stan Harvey, John Smith, Jerry Tar.
And then myself, Bob, Kyle, and Jen, if they, you know, still, um, if they have time, wanna be whatever, but they're invited as well, so.
Is Derek gonna be there?
No.
Not for that?
No, uh, he's not there for that, I don't believe. So, that meeting will be at six thirty on the twenty-seventh and then a week later, uh, interview the number that you, that the committee has chosen, generally three, to interview, uh, from the applications. And so on the third of September, that'd be a big, that'd be a big, uh, a big event, uh, those interviews. And so, once the CM is on board, uh, they really help facilitate the conversation with the pre-bond process to determine, uh, scope of project and, um, that, that, those are pretty vital, necessary pieces of information, so. This will be a, a big onboard of a, of a partner.
I'll let everybody, I think, know initially, it's one of those dates, but I will remind, remind them to get up against the times. Okay, uh, number eleven, summer maintenance update?
Gail is here, so he, he'll be happy to share the, maybe the quietest, most routine summer maintenance we've had in, in many, many years. Last summer, obviously, was the second half of the roof project over the elementary, so had to work around that. I think, I think we went five or six years in a row where Gail and his crew, who he'll acknowledge, uh, had to work around something pretty significant, uh, throughout the summer, but.
Yeah, first off off, off, I'd like to thank Bill Westrom and Nick Harding for working so hard this summer and being so diligent. Sometimes it seems like, uh, this place is pretty active, so sometimes it seems like we're kinda squeezed for time to get in and out of an area, uh, with summer school and everything, so I appreciate their effort. Uh, of course, we did the usual, cleaned carpets, refinished the floors, spent quite a bit on paint, did some painting, uh, replaced the windows in the ag building this summer. Those are all new in the shop area. Uh, hopefully, the flat, new flagpole goes up tomorrow. And I think Kyle said that they expect the scoreboard structure to show up tomorrow sometime, so hopefully that's up in the next week and a half, so we got a scoreboard, uh, for the first game and, uh, that's about all I got right now, any questions?
No dragon hoses, the summer water and grass.
No, didn't have to do that. The, the football field, I'd say, looks pretty good. I know, um, Mo had looked in at adding some sprinklers. I don't know what number we decided on or what. I know we had it shut off for a little time, but Mother Nature was, I think, since they started paving the street down there, they said they had eight and a half inches, is that what you said, Gary? So, didn't really make a difference whether the sprinklers were running or not, so. But, uh, other than that, I think that's, we still got a few things to get ready the last couple of days, so.
I imagine you logged a lot of mower, uh, mowing hours.
Yeah.
Uh, actually.
The Dan shows.
The mower does have a few more hours on than, it's getting up there. Uh, Tom Souzer and Adam Milk, they did a lot of the mowing and trimming this summer, so I should thank them also, so.
I wait, I am gonna budget for new mower for maintenance, uh, not that we'll necessarily need it, but the money will be there. It's, it's got a lot of hours, a lot of years on it.
It's getting up there, got thirteen years on it.
Not, not a, not an incredible expense, but we'll put that in the.
It's still, it's still working now, but thirteen years is thirteen years, so. But, other than that, I think that's it. No questions?
Thank you for taking care of it so well that it lasted thirty years.
You're welcome.
No, thanks, good. Uh, number twelve, budget committee. We got a meeting, seven twenty-eight, correct guys?
I got a few things written down, just, uh, if you wanna jump in, if I miss something, let me know. It looks like, uh, Dr. Alt shared, you know, we, with the valuations coming in, it's where they're gonna be at this year, that we should be able to actually lower the general levy a little bit in the months this year. We're having a budget workshop coming up here eventually.
I should, yeah, we, we, we had kinda discussed, until we have our certified valuations from the county, which I expect within a week, uh, they're not due till the twentieth, but last year I got them on thirteen. Expect those in a week, until we have that number, we're, we're just doing a lot of guessments and we can guess pretty close, but let's have our budget workshop after we have all the, the known data and then we can make, you know, clear decisions on, on those priorities. Mine would be for you that, uh, that we drop the general levy and have a conversation about, uh, building fund levy. So, similar conversation, I think, uh, you know, it's last year. We don't have anything really significant planned for a budget for, we budgeted four hundred thousand dollars in this fiscal year, just ending for CDs, but you've been able to invest all of that, so that's good. So, uh, well, that, that conversation, as soon, as soon as I have those valuations, I'll talk to Mr. Rasmussen, we'll find that date, uh, for, for that budget workshop. It could potentially, could potentially replace the facility meeting on the fourth Monday. We, we maybe don't need to engage the facility committee this month, uh, as we're picking our CM, so we could maybe use that date for budget workshop instead of facility conversation is what I would maybe suggest.
Yeah, I just, we had just a few things that, you know, five point two million was in personnel, so that's eighty percent of the budget, or concept. We're saving some money with inverse.
Yeah.
Note down there.
Yeah, less than a hundred thousand, but, but, what's about eighty or sixty or?
Sixty.
Yeah, sixty some, sixty-five.
Yeah, we're currently fifty-five cents general and two cent building. And I think that's more, kind of, lower than some of our surrounding schools.
Yes, I'll, I'll have all that data for you, that's, that's kinda nice to know. It doesn't necessarily help you make decisions about what's best for us, but it, those are, those are comparative numbers you're gonna want moving forward anyway with, uh, conversation about funding.
And another thing I, our nutrition budget's gone up, but we used to get a lot of money for COVID. The COVID money has kinda dried up now, so, uh, those numbers are a little bit higher, but we'll, we'll see all that in detail, the budget workshop. Have I missed anything?
I think that's about it.
We're just kinda hang tight now, it's up to.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure out a date then for that, that workshop, that, that might work if we don't really have a facility to be.
And I did ask Bob today, you know, about engaging the facility committee on the fourth, uh, Monday as we had and, and kinda suggested, can we kinda skip this as we focus on the CM selection? And do we have anything new? If we don't have anything new to engage him, uh, with, maybe, maybe we should, you know, we can, we can, I think, miss this month of August.
Okay, so, we'll move on to number fourteen then, or thirteen, sorry. Annual school fundraisers. We did some talk about that, I guess, uh, Mr. Schmidt gave us a list of kinda what every activity does currently. Seems like there, you know, there can be a lot of fundraisers. Just thought it might be alright to just have a discussion on that, maybe some alternatives or keep going the way we are.
I do have a question. So about a half an hour before the board meeting tonight, I was out in my flower garden and someone walked into my yard to talk to me about the fundraising. So it seems that they have a feeling that the girls have to fundraise for everything that they want, new uniforms or everything that they need, and that there is a presumption that the boys do not. Can you clear that up?
Every uniform we bought for the boys, we bought the equal number for the girls. If you talk about the boys having a third football uniform, they paid for those themselves, they paid for all of them. The girls bought a third volleyball uniform this year, which they paid for themselves. The boys are buying a third basketball uniform that they're paying for themselves, but everything else has been bought through the school, equal number for girls and boys, so.
Thank you.
I don't, something that's school equipment, uniform, um, we, we shouldn't, and I don't believe we do, expect kids to fundraise for necessary school equipment for curriculum, curricular items. Um, I had mentioned about the music risers, um, is they thought they have to fundraise for that. No, that's a school, that's a necessary school investment, so. But I think it's a worthy conversation on, you know, why are we fundraising and for what purpose? And are those things necessary and do we, do you as a board, you know, support that? Because oftentimes we don't know what, what, what is this for? Why are we selling this and this and this, why are we fundraising, what is it for?
So this parent had concerns about their children, their daughters, selling baked goods door to door and they don't feel that the boys have to do that. So, if we're going to do things like that, we need to make sure everybody's doing that.
It's kinda up to the coach, isn't it?
Yeah.
And each sport, how much they wanna do.
You know, I don't know how boys do selling cupcakes, but.
I mean, we chose a different fundraiser when we did ours, we sold the card, I heard complaints about that. I guess my thoughts are, if you don't wanna buy something, then just sit, tough kid enough. And we had plenty of people who wanted to support the program. And we had plenty of people who wanted to support the program, so they just wrote a check to the football team and said, here you go, donate it. We just go and put it in the bank if they want to go that route, so... I, I understand that the boys' side was maybe more digital because they were able to send texts, and that was just the program that we use. The girls are more go door to door. It's just all on what the coach chooses to use and how they want to go about it. But when it comes down to it and fundraising, if, if people want to support a program, they're gonna support a program. If they don't, it's okay to say no. It doesn't hurt my feelings, so... And I know I've had a hundred kids ask me about stuff, some I support, some I don't. And it's not that I don't support the program, it's just sometimes I don't want any more cookie dough, so I get it.
I know, it's, it's hard for me and my wife to say no when you get a kid come to the house, you know, to do this. I think sometimes you feel guilted into doing it, you know, and maybe you wouldn't have otherwise.
I don't think any of these teams are fundraising for any required gear or equipment for the sport that they're in. It's all, maybe it's travel gear, maybe it's, maybe it's doing some extra stuff in the summer. You know, maybe it's helping send a kid to Florida for, just need tools, whatever. So I don't think, I think all fundraising could cease, and our kids would be able to do the bare minimum, get the bare minimum equipment, but they got travel gear, they want their name on it, they want to keep it. That's, that's where it comes in. I get it, it gets exhausting, and those kids are constantly selling something. It's probably hard for them, they're busy enough. I don't know what the answer is. But every sport's different, each sport's have different expenses, you know, since some are really expensive, some are not.
So like the alternate jersey, is that worn dur, is that worn during the game?
Yes.
Yeah.
So if a kid doesn't buy it, then they don't have a jersey for the game?
You never let a kid out.
So whether, whether half the kids decide they don't want to buy that jersey, then, or the other half raise money, then you're just, you said, I guess, where's the, because you, you know, some kids, some kids just don't fundraise, whether, you know, they're not comfortable with it, or don't have the means to, or, I guess, so how's that worked out with those individuals?
I guess I've never had the issue with it, because we always have, have the discussion before the year, do you guys feel that you want this and that you get it when the season's over? And the kids are like, yeah, and like the football team, I pay for half of it, the kid pays for half of it. I mean, if they choose to quit, they're gonna keep it, so they should have a little bit of money into it as well, outside of what's fundraised. I know wrestling does it for singlets. They have, they split it. The volleyball ones, I know they wanted a different color, so that's what they went with. They didn't put names on that, I don't think, so I think those are gonna stay with the program, but outside of that, that's about it for alternates.
I see that, you know, there's, there's a certain, there's definitely an element of peer pressure with that, you know. The team says it, you know, not everyone's obviously gonna speak up, and then it gets said, and now everyone else's true pressure to do in this. I, I guess, the, what I've heard, again, talking to other individuals, it's just, it just seems like it's one fundraiser after another, after another, and, and then through our discussions, you know, it's the fair component, you know, geez, you know, football's earlier in the year, so their fundraiser's first, but now your sport's later in the year. Now people get fundraised out, you know, they've already done on this end, so it's, it's not necessarily even to a point for those different groups, but it's just, it just seems like we have one fundraiser after another, and I'd like to, I just have, I guess, have this discussion on find, find maybe an alternate route, or an alternate funding source or some, you know, the, the, the alternate jerseys, you know. Yes, they have names on them. I've read where other schools, schools purchased them and then sold them to the kid at a depreciated cost at the end of the season, you know, and that was, they didn't have to fundraise for it, but they got it for a little, you know, a cheaper price at the end of the year potentially. Maybe that's not, I don't know, but just, just, just one after another, and then as parents, you know, we're, we're driving around spending our time, fuel and resources delivering goods and baked goods and other items to people, you know, there's a certain expense to that, so... I mean, a lot of the stuff, I mean, a lot of the stuff that they're fundraising for is great, but it's, I think it's just gotten to a point where people have really started to notice it or feel it.
You know, the third jersey, you can blame the board for that, even, we did tonight, and they, didn't we, a couple of years ago? It came out that they wanted the third jersey, it's not that we weren't getting the third jerseys, the kids had bought the third.
Most of the money goes towards camp fees. When you look at athletics, when they fundraise stuff, it's, I'm gonna help a kid pay for camp. I mean, send a kid to a football camp's a hundred and seventy-five bucks, so... Well, you send thirty kids, I'm writing a check for four grand for kids to go to football camp. So I try to pay for half of it, whatever it is, just to get them there. I know volleyball does the same, because they go to camps.
Their camps is kind of the same, I mean, cost-wise, volleyball, basketball camp.
A basketball volleyball camp for, they normally do a team fee, so however many teams you put in, but you're looking anywhere between two and three hundred dollars per team, so... And if you look at it, a team, you're gonna play about eight to ten kids on a team. So, you know, our volleyball team would take three teams, that's nine hundred dollars for one camp, so...
Now you say you pay for it, you're talking, you're talking about the fundraiser that comes out of that, and the balances by the kid themselves, or the parents?
I try to, try to eliminate the cost from the parents as much as I can, just to lower it, because I know there was one year where we didn't have any funds in our account, and we paid all out of pocket, and there were some kids that had struggled or were on the fence of, I want to go, but I can't afford it, so...
How's that work with FFA, SCCLA, when they like go to conventions? That, it's something, it's kind of a, it's like an extra thing.
Chad and Renita create accounts for every kid, and then essentially you get paid for however many hours that you put in working, like concession stands, they have that set up, so then that goes into a fund for them, and at fundraising, they break it down by kid, how much each kid sells, and that money goes into their account, and then they're able to use that when they go to state convention, national convention, dues, anything like that.
Does every kid go, have the opportunity to go to that, or is it depend on how much?
Yes, qualifying, state convention.
That's not qualifying.
I know, I mean, you have qualifying competitions, yes, for LBEs and TVs, so, for FFA, yes. But kids can go just for the experience, and then nationals, they, Chad starts taking handful of kids every year, and I know Renita wants to take a handful of kids too, or try to take kids.
But the school pays for hotel rooms, lodging, or is that come out of fundraisers?
That comes out of their...
Fundraising.
FFA accounts and SCCLA comes, yeah.
That's not an optional, you know, event, you know, national convention, but... And to be fair, you know, there are a couple of organizations within the community that are not school sponsored or school functions that do some fundraising too, so, you know, they may be getting hit by non-school organizations for fundraising, but obviously, since it, you know, it's of a fiscal nature, I mean, as, as board, you can sure weigh in and yea and nay a list of fundraisers that we can expect our sponsors and coaches to present every year about this time. What do you want to, because thi, this was a concern of mine a few years ago, when it just seemed like things were coming up that I wasn't aware of, and I said, okay, are we just on the fly, saying we're gonna do a fundraiser, and it's March or it's October, whatever, you know, and so Mr. Schmidt and I had a conversation about, you know, we, we want to think these things through, and they do need to get approval from administration if they want to do some fundraiser. So I think this is a good conversation, and the data Mr. Schmidt put together with his coaches and sponsors, I think is really helpful, and it does require them to think through as well, that I'm just not doing something just to do something, there's an intent and a purpose. Because we may find some things, you don't need to fundraise for that, the school should, should provide that through our budget process. The school board should, should provide those items or that experience or whatever, but you, you can sure expect annually. We, we want to know what everybody's plan is for this year. If it's not on this list, it's not gonna be considered, and, and then you can determine what is reasonable or not.
Did we have anything for music, or did that?
That came in late.
Okay, they did the mattress fundraiser.
Yeah, mattress fundraiser, and then they do their, in the spring.
Variety show.
Variety show. Every year, they use that as a free will donation, and then they also sell tickets and do a meal with it and everything, and that goes back to the music.
Who did the soft water song?
Soft water song was close.
That was a good. It's not easy to use. And they were easy to carry.
I, I guess my, come with the most negative thing I've ever heard was back when we were raised, they were doing the fundraisers for the, of the playground equipment. A lot of people called and complained about that, like they felt like we should have just, as board, should have paid for it, which I think, looking back, we probably should have. But I mean, I think that kind of stems from all this other frustration, was maybe that was like, you know, kind of the straw that broke the camel's back type of deal. That's what I, I haven't heard anybody complain about a certain sport or a certain extracurricular fundraising, but I've heard several people complain about that for the playground.
Yeah, I heard a few on that one too. I think this is good to go over, you know, maybe an item to talk about this time of year, so everybody's kind of aware of what they're planning.
Yeah, I, I guess my opinion is, I'd rather just see the kids play sports and not have them hustling around town, or parents or relatives, and everyone get mass text messages on fundraisers saying, you know, it's for school, it's athletics, and now we're turning them into little salespeople. You know, geez, the kids don't have enough time the way it is with, with the practice and, you know, family time, and now you're out, we're out, parents are out running kids around delivering stuff. I think we just need to look at a better way of utilizing our kids' time. Now, I, I understand that, I mean, I, like, elementary books were this class, should the school be buying the books that go in the library?
And we, yeah, and we did.
We have twenty-five hundred dollars, and it's great, the writing books, so I agree with that. Geez, I think the school should just be doing that, if any books are here. I mean, it's like, I do think we need to review all these and find where we can, and then, you know, if we find value in it. If we can do it on that end and alleviate the child of having to be a sales, sales rep for a company. I guess the other question I had is, like, the cards and then like volleyball, we have, I mentioned that one company or whatever, does that, do we have any information on like, or do you have information on like every dollar raised, every, every dollar raised, the kid gets back this much, like there's a fifty percent return or a thirty percent return? Because I imagine some of these fundraisers are, are definitely a better return than others, so...
Those two companies are anywhere from forty to sixty, so it's like cards, it's a matter of how much product you sell. Same as with like cookie dough and things like that. Obviously, the more you sell, the higher the percentage of return you're gonna get, but forty is the lowest that any fundraiser I've seen gets back, so...
With, with school starting next week, and two coaches and sponsors probably having plans in place for this school year, I mean, this is, you've put this on our radar. We just kind of monitor, keep the conversation going. Next spring, if you direct us to have a, have a dedicated list for twenty-six, twenty-seven, what do your people propose? And then you can have a conversation about that and digest that, determine what the school should pay for, what's reasonable, depending upon how many activities kids are involved in. Somebody is gonna, some parents will be like, my kid is always fundraising. Well, that's because they're in FFA, volleyball, basketball, that, you know, I mean, that, so there would maybe be, you know, some of that.
Well, I would say consider yourself directed. I'd like to talk about it in April and then have a decision made before school starts. Isn't that unfair?
That's what Dr. Allsher said.
Well, it's it.
But it's, I'm just a proposal for you, that, yeah, for you.
Like, what does, I think, do you kind of think like, like, maybe they say like X amount of dollars is how much the rest of the program needs for the summer, like that we just budget for that?
I like to have that option, you know, have, if, if we, I, I get it, if we can, or if that's an actual taxpayer deal, we could, as Kate had mentioned, you know, there's, there's alternative, I mean, there's maybe other options, you know. We just need to have that discussion on maybe some other avenues.
Yeah, and I would argue the kids are benefiting from it, you know. You know, they're, you're running around town, they're running around town. They're benefiting financially from it. I mean, that's what it's meant for us for them, but I mean, I'll take...
Selling equity.
Yeah.
Selling equity in the program.
Yeah, I mean, one thing wrestling is it for is, we, we take the team out west and we put them in a hotel room for the night. That's a couple thousand dollars for one night, you know, but otherwise, we'd be leaving at two or three o'clock in the morning. But we want to travel and cover the whole state, and that's how we think we're gonna be a good program, and that's just something we build into, to how we fundraise, but we do it a little different, but I don't know.
And that's all fine, but there needs to be a balance. Downtime is important time. Family time is important. And like Justin says, they're running around all the time. School year, as soon as school starts, it is so busy. Kids have a lot going on from the day, first day of school to the last day of school, and they, I mean, trying to teach kids work ethic. In the summertime, they have weightlifting and everything. I mean, we've had this discussion before. Downtime is important time. They all need to just be kids once in a while and not pushing something all the time.
Right, not much we do on this year yet.
No, I agree, you're thinking.
I do like, I do like that you have, you're aware, obviously, you're aware of the different fundraiser, which is good, right? Because you got a hold of that, because like you said, you thought you were kind of winging it there for a minute, so... That's great that you guys, you guys have that right now, so that's a definitely, like, step in a good, a good direction.
I think by the, by the spring, as, as the school year is closing as, as well, we'll have probably some pretty good precise data. This, this is kind of what we've done annually, for example, but we'll have real data in the spring. This is what we did, and that will probably mirror to a great degree what they might want to do the next year, and so that should help facilitate a conversation in the spring, is it reasonable what we're asking our coaches, sponsors and kids to do.
Coaches can prioritize what they really want to do, and then the school can help out on some of the other things, maybe. We could look at that too. Yeah, it's good to have that conversation out there, to kind of know that the board's thinking about it too, so...
You have a discussion? Okay, we'll move on to fourteen, an update on the Lincoln Avenue paving project.
Well, we're behind schedule, but Mr. Tarr is here, and he's much more skilled, this is more his wheelhouse, and so I invited him to, to be present to share, or for, if you have any questions about how that's going, have a couple minor changes, a couple weather events that might require some redos, but... It's exciting to see the, the work down there. They're finding out how hard it is to move water. They've had a few opportunities to practice that.
You guys have any questions? They're behind schedule.
So like first October, about it, or?
So there's no deadline yet, so they said they won't obviously be done by the first football game for their eight and a half inches of water. This is the first Monday. They haven't pumped water. They called me Sunday. They were happy to see that was dry. They'll start moving pretty fast if it stays dry. Wednesday, Thursday, you're gonna see concrete going in like crazy. We had about five changes so far, minor. We've changed the water pit for the Legion and the set stands. We've, the city actually moved that out, eliminated that out of the concrete area. The next change was west of essentially King Street or your guys' driveway on the east side of the field. We made that go straight. It didn't cost anything. The city went and dug, dug for the change, solved that problem. They had a little issue with some staking on the far west side. They figured it out, engineering problem, yet again, not our cost. The biggest thing was, is if you look down there now, we actually took out the track, the track fence from the west side of the stands all the way to the center, according directly west. They're gonna end up paving from the fence to the track to eliminate all that water off there, which was not projected in there. The only change we'll have is just the sidewalk cost, so it'll be fairly minimal. We took out the fence. We'll have to find a wool, as in not them, but us and the school will have to find a company to come in and put the fence back in, but other than that, I would say for this size of project and the problems we've had, I think we're actually moving really well. So the biggest problem there is there's just no, there's just no drought. Like, we're working in a swamp for the most of the time, but I think everything worked well. I've kept Gail, Kyle and Darren all, all informed, and I think hopefully with the dry week ahead, we're gonna move pretty fast, so I think we're doing in a good spot.
Was there some work that needed redone after the rain?
Yes, so they pushed hard, so I believe you guys got a text and pictures on the west of King Street, you know how they're working. They worked till... Yes, um, so they pushed hard, so I believe you guys got a text of pictures on the west of King Street, you know how they're working, they worked till.
Missed the traction.
Yeah, they worked till literally the rain hit, um, and I think they were rushing it to the rain just to get the concrete in and the last, I haven't got the exact footage, but twelve to fifteen feet will be pulled out just because there's a slight raise in it and that's just handwork. So these guys do, in my opinion, they're, they're doing great handwork. They're, the water flows down those, cause all those flumes and granites are all done by hand. Um, so I think what happened is when they were pulling the concrete, raised just a little bit, um, it flows majority of the water, but we're gonna redo it to make it right. That's not our cost, that's a them cost. Um, they understand, they're happy with it, they understand how it works out. I think for the weather they've had, that this crew's been easy to work with and they've done great work. So, that's my opinion.
That road on the east side, you said it's straight now, what was it proposed to be?
The, the road straight is the drainage. So when they first engineered the drainage to try, to try helping it out, they went down and then the last track shed, it was gonna do a ninety and then a ninety into the front of the flume, where Harper is. Um, after looking at it, I talked to them about changes going straight in and adding flumet, like it, you know, how it just attaches in there. Um, it was gonna be a little more expensive. We ended up digging it to offset the cost, so it cost nothing. There's no change orders, nothing. We, we offset the cost, so that's already done, that, that inset's already in there, so. Um, they made it a lot more functional. We were worried about the turn of the ninety with water, if they have them flooding issues, pushing issues, um, but I think it's a lot better designed now. And I think on all projects like this, you're gonna have, supposedly, I, I bet I have a lot less takeups than what a whole bond issue does, so I think we're still sitting, we're still sitting good, so. Whenever you dig into something, you're always gonna find problems, so. Um, we're gonna move one fire hydrant, eliminate that, but they're all projects that we're actually picking up, trying to eliminate any extra costs, so our guys are stepping in and taking care of them, so. The biggest, I would, well, the only cost expense that we're gonna incur extra so far is from the track fence to the track. Um, we're just gonna pay for a sidewalk cost, three hundred and fifteen feet now, and so we accepted that cost, but otherwise the fence and everything, we're gonna take care of, so.
And that's just to help with water flow.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is. What, what, what it was is when they staked it and they, and they surveyed it, they surveyed from the fence and not the edge of the track, well, you would assume that it goes from the track down, well, it doesn't. That dirt over time is mounted up over the track. And so I don't know if the surveyors felt like they shouldn't go inside the fence or whatever, so they staked it from the ground at the fence instead of the track edge. So I would say minor oversight by the staking crew, but, so they're not gonna charge us a surveying cost, engineering cost is simply gonna be the four foot?
So from leaning.
From, from, from. From lane to the fence.
Just one foot outside of the foot, so I think it was three and a half.
Yeah, and, and we had options. We could have just ground, we could have just taken the topsoil off, um, cut it off, you could have put turf, you could have resawed it. Um, we had a long discussion and we felt like the long-term solution was gonna be concrete. Um, that was actually brought up by the contract themselves. That was their suggestion. They said, we don't feel like this is gonna do you guys service. They're the ones who actually approached us and the engineers and said, we think there's a better solution, so.
Is that just west of the stands or it's on both sides?
Uh, it's just from west of the stands to where it curves, right at the center of the curve, so just on the right side where that flume comes out and follows, it follows the fence out. Then that's the only spot that will be that issue. That is, that is the low side of the track. That's where water stands on the track, um, so.
All right, well, thanks for the update. Got number fifteen then, policy review. Six oh four oh one.
Okay, these are mostly instructional policies, so I've had Kyle and Jen take a peek to see if there's anything in them. When we look at these, you know, wherever you ask some out of years, sometimes like, oh, we quit doing that years ago, or we started doing something. So I asked them to look and see if there's any language revisions that we might need on, uh, for example, the basic instruction program. Units or hours, I don't, we haven't had any statutory changes for this, a new revision would have been pushed out to us on this. Uh, we, these were on your agenda a few months ago and we tabled them a few months ago, uh, and so we're just kind of getting back to, getting back to.
They were all just reviews, that we have to change anything?
Just all reviews, yes. So just routine reviews.
The only one is six oh four oh two, instruction assessment, academic content standards.
Okay.
Says we adopted ELA standards from two thousand and eight, last revision was in twenty twenty-one, so it's just changing to September first, twenty twenty-one.
Is there?
Yeah, that one.
Right here. This should be September.
Sept- twen- September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one.
I gotta copy this, the September two, twenty-one, sorry, you're saying it's the twenty-first?
Pretty sure it's September first. I'll double check if we have it in our folder. September second, twenty twenty-one.
Yep.
This one is approved by the stake board.
No other changes is in date?
Nope.
Hope that cultural education program's been around about twenty years now. Another conversation a couple years ago about the health standards. It's gonna be Jen's expertise, reading instruction, we approve. This was required just recently, information related to this last year. Okay, so with just that one change, uh, if somebody wants to make a motion to approve revision as stated, then we're good for policy review?
I'll make a motion to approve policy revisions as presented.
I'll second that. The movement's seconded to approve policy reviews as presented with the one change to six oh four oh two. Six oh four oh two. You have a discussion? Vote myself, yes, Justin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
seventeen, discuss and take possible action on revision to policy five, five oh four oh six.
Okay, so this was kind of caught by several school districts and we had a discussion administrator days and it's, you know, I, I identified the, the part where we'd like to strike out of policy five oh four oh six. This is a brand new policy. Um, but in item two, you can see that it, it, it requires the school administration to get, uh, parents consent if we ask them to adjust their attire at school. So this is not something we've ever really had to do in the past. Hey, we're gonna call your parents and see if they'll allow us to tell you to take your hat off in the classroom. It's, it's, we don't really have this issue, but we, we don't think we're bound by a policy where we essentially can't be administrators and say, you know what? Your t-shirt with the marijuana weed, uh, emblem on the corner that you think we didn't notice, you gotta turn your shirt inside out, can't make me. They're right. We can't unless we get their parents' consent, and then they might say, no. So we need a little bit of authority to make reasonable decisions about students' attire. We should have maybe, uh, caught this. I'm not sure why N S B maybe wrote it in there, but I, but it does have a lot to do again with the movement for parents' rights in school, and I get that. If you've got rogue administrators, that's maybe a, you know, but we're pretty reasonable and we have minimal issues. But we don't want a policy that requires us to ask parents, can we tell your kid to change their shirt? Or tag a hat off, uh, something simple with regard to, it's less than a handful of times you get caught where we have a student attire issue, but then we, we ask them and they do it. But we don't want to have to call home and get parent permission for, for an issue such as that.
What part of that was being structured out there?
The, the line that says altering a student's appearance or removing or altering a student's attire without consent from their caregiver is not allowed. Oh, on five oh four oh six?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you'd have, yeah, because I, I put the line through, uh, policy back at that. So we, we'd just like the authority to, to be able to expect it, to ask and expect, tell.
You give an example of altering attire, what would be an example of altering a student's appearance?
Okay, that would be like if we wanted to cut somebody's hair. This whole policy came from, uh, a native school where a student's hair was cut by a, a staff member. I don't know the precise details, but that got the ball rolling for this, and so, um, tribal regalia and something that is, uh, appearance that is likened to a culture. Um, so instead of writing a policy for just native schools, they write a policy for, because you might have native students in, in non-native schools, so to speak. Um, so that would be something like that, altering their appearance, where we say, hey, you got your hair down to here, we're gonna cut your hair. Now, we would never do that. This is more for, hey, take your hat off. Well, I don't wanna take my hat off too. Again, that doesn't happen, but we, we don't, you know, we wouldn't be able to say, hey, gotta take your hat off in school.
So, yeah, so it, I mean, it, it states, you know, we are not gonna alter hair, but then we're striking out at the, the part versus altering a student's appearance.
Yeah.
Or removing or altering students' attire. So I understand that attire or remove, you know, that, like the, I'm just saying by striking out, altering a student's appearance, that means it gives, it allows for the altering of students' appearance. So what would be an example of?
I, I don't know that I can give you another example, quite honestly, because I don't know that we ever have altered or expected or told a student to alter their appearance, um.
So maybe we want to leave that language in and then, and then remove the, or the, you know, alter, removing or altering of a student's attire without consent. That's what, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I suppose that would be reasonable. I think it, we're, we're fortunate that I don't have any example where we've had an issue about an appearance.
Look at the line I brought up, Justin.
Well, that talks about hair directly.
Yeah.
Right, but I would say, but we're saying, but then we're saying we can alter students, I'm just saying, what would be an example of? No, that'd be attire.
That would probably be.
So that's what I'm saying, is we're striking it out, so what would be an example of that we do?
Facial piercings. Let's say, uh, somebody has a dangling adornment, I don't know, that was, that they're playing with or is a distraction or, or whatever. We say, hey, you know what, take that, take that out, or that, uh, I, you know, I, I, I don't.
No, I know, I know.
So that, that might be something that might be classified under appearance, um.
Can we add something? We were just thinking about at Norfolk, when they, I wanna be a cat, I wanna be a dog. How about a face tattoo? How about a nose ring?
Yeah.
Any of those.
Well, you have to remove their.
And you're not from having a face tattoo.
We can't remove their tattoo.
I didn't mean encourage that.
So, well, I mean, would, okay, so would that be an example, so if they have a, say, say an offensive facial tattoo that you would, why would they, they cover it? I mean, would that be an example of altering a student's appearance that we, that we, that we're good with? That's, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, I think that's exactly what.
So that'd be a reason for leaving that language. Okay, that's, that's what I was just trying to get to, is what, what does that phrase mean?
That's a very good example, right there, so I think, yeah, if you need to take a black marker anyway to X out some, some sort of tattoo, I think.
And we're very fortunate that it will really, it will never be an issue here, but, but, um, again, I, I, we, and there's, I think we, we do a, a fine job of using our judgment on, okay, what's, what, what battles we're fighting, but, um, we want to be able to not have to sit and call mom and dad and say, hey, do you give us permission to make this decision about the culture of our school? It's something that we've maybe determined to be inappropriate or inappropriately.
So we're good with just taking that hold?
I think so. So I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve revisions to policy five oh four dot oh six, student dress code agreement as presented.
I will second that. Dave, the movement's seconded to approve revision to your policy five oh four oh six, student dress code agreement as presented. Vote, Wyatt?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Yourself, yes. She carried six oh. All right, we're on to number eighteen, discuss and take possible action to adopt a resolution increasing the school's district base growth base.
Growth?
School district's base growth percentage by up to seven percent.
Okay, so this is year three and, uh, of, uh, from L B two forty-three, this is part of L B two forty-three, which is also part of the pink postcard bill that you're somewhat familiar with, been qualified for the past two years, so it hasn't been on our radar quite as much, but, um, again, this puts, uh, this gives you the opportunity to increase by up to seven percent the district's base growth uh, in the next budget year and beyond to, to prepare for any unforeseen or unanticipated expenses. And then if you don't spend any of that extra seven percent, which you have not each of the past two years, uh, you do get a benefit on your base growth for the next fiscal year, so it, 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 it is a mechanism to uh, put yourself in a little bit better financial position, security, uh, and slightly higher base growth in the next year. Um, I, you know, it asks our friends at N D E, you know, is this maybe one of the factors that has potentially led us to be in a, in a better position after, uh, two years of this now, in a better position with our, uh, with our general fund budget? And they said, yeah, it would, it, it would be a factor, so, uh, it's worked in the benefit of plenty of public schools without any, you know, additional expense. You haven't, you haven't spent the money that you authorized yourself in the event of unexpected expenditures.
So you, you mentioned we haven't used it in the past. Is this something you renew each year?
Yeah.
You have to, yeah. Every year you have to take action on, on authorizing yourself that additional set.
But aren't we eventually just kind of, we're still like spending more money, because we're just making it to where we can go up seven percent next year. And we got grandfathered last year because we both did seven percent, so this year we don't have to ask for that first seven percent, am I right? That's how I understand it.
Yeah, so I mean, we're in a position to have a lower levy next fiscal year, and this is one of the reasons why, uh, one of many reasons why, that it's a factor. It, to calculate, you know, how big a factor, how significant it is, I, you know, I don't know that I can really do that for you.
But our levy goes down, but our evaluations are up.
Correct.
So we're really, we're not, when we say the levy goes down, we're not like, we're not taking any less money from the, from the taxpayer, we're still taking more money, because we're not, that's why.
Tax ask is still going up.
Ten dollars.
Could be a lot more.
Is it going up?
Taxes, could be a lot more.
But, but we are kind of passing along a little bit of, of that by, by decreasing the levy, you know, so.
Cause we don't have to.
But it isn't, it's delicate. I mean, you want to be careful that, make sure you can pay your bills and anticipate, you know, certain expenditures. Uh, this is a bit of a safety net.
I can't remember, does it have to be decided before September first or was it October first?
September first. So I included the memo, you know, that's, and, and I checked with, uh, our legal counsel that produced this memo, it's in your packet. I said, I just want to make sure, you know, nothing's changed, that the details that you have in here and the explanation, which a lot of it is legalese, I understand, uh, is all still prudent, uh, you know, and it is, so if you've had a chance to kind of look through that and try to digest it, try to wrap your mind around it. Um, it's, it is becoming more clear, but there's still a level of, it seems somewhat complicated, but, uh, again, it's, uh, something that, that you. something that, that you've authorized me for the last years, I just ask you to, to consider it.
We talked about this before the meeting, this is a vote to authorize it, doesn't give us, it's still, it'll let you utilize it yet, it still takes another vote, while us, they would utilize it, so.
It's a hard decision to make, like, I trust my budget committee, but it's a hard decision to make when we don't have all the numbers that we talk about from the county and we haven't seen the budget, we haven't had a meeting, we haven't sat down together. It's a hard decision to make.
Put in the long run, we're, we're basically setting our, like, if somebody really wants to play the long game, we're, we're setting ourselves up to be able to pay, like, significantly more in taxes, like, we're, we're authorizing the school to be able to significantly take more taxes in the next, in three or four years from now, we'll keep doing several percent of it.
But we also.
We're not trying to say.
We have to keep the staff.
I, I get that, I totally understand, I, I, I know, understand, I'm just saying, like, uh, sometimes I feel like we're playing checkers and other people are playing chess.
Well, this, the seven percent doesn't grow exponentially, it's just where it goes for one year and then if we get.
Then we're authorized to do that much more next year.
I don't know, it goes, it re, it refigures in the algorithm, as, since we didn't utilize it, we get a small bump anyway in our base.
We get a part of that, like, we might even percent that.
It is a, it is a fraction, Chance, I don't, I don't know the number, but it isn't a seven percent base growth every year. That seven percent is only for this next budget year, you have that, that additional, you don't spend it, uh, but you receive.
Next budget year, you're talking twenty-five, twenty-six, or we're talking twenty-seven?
Twenty-five, twenty-six, and then for twenty-five, twenty-six, you're authorizing an extra seven percent uh, beyond, uh, your tax asking authority, uh, you don't spend it, uh, and then twenty-seven, twenty-eight, uh, you receive a minimal benefit, uh, your base growth is bumped slightly in twenty-seven, twenty-eight based on, you know, your previous year. And what, you know, if you did spend any of that additional funds that you've authorized yourself. So, you're, it, it, it is kind of a two-vote thing, which is kind of a local decision, uh, you know, but we haven't brought it to you, uh, either the last two years, outside of this meeting, we haven't brought to you, maybe we need to access some of those funds. And I don't think we would, we'll, 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 we'll budget, uh, to spend, to be able to fund the operational expenses of the school district next fiscal year, we'll budget for that without this seven percent, we won't plan on it. Uh, but you know that, that things can happen, we haven't really had that happen, the roof blown off cost us five thousand dollars. Insurance paid to one point five million, so that, that wasn't a, an unanticipated expense, although there were some residuals and all over the way.
Yeah, this, this would have to pass by five members, five.
Seven.
Five members. So the resolution, Dr. Al, was just to increase the school's district's base growth percentage using term of schools, district property tax request authority by seven percent.
Yeah, up to seven percent, your own, let's go up to, you could go less. You do have that authority, but, uh, you could go up to seven percent.
To utilize those seven percent funds, is that just a simple majority then?
Yeah.
We'd have.
That's me.
We, I know we vote on, but then we have simple majority, that's not, that's not a seventy percent.
No, that's a simple.
For the second option.
The second option is maybe to be a four, that's a vote.
Right.
Correct? Because you basically would, it'd be within the budgetary.
Right, it'd just be as normal as.
So then I guess I'll, I'll entertain a motion into adopt a resolution as presented to increase the school district's base, base growth percentage using term of the school district's property tax request authority by seven percent. I, I will make that motion.
I would say you're supposed to make that motion.
I will make that motion. I'll say.
And I can tell you before you vote, we are, we are certainly, uh, in a position to avoid the pink postcard, I mean, I, I, I'm a hundred percent certain, uh, and I think, I think that, that plays good on your fiscal responsibility, so this will be the third year in a row that, um, your budget won't qualify for the pink postcard bill, for the pink postcard meeting.
Okay, it's been moved in second to, uh, increase the school district's base growth percentage using term of the school district's property tax request authority by seven percent. Further discussion? Okay, uh, we'll take a vote, again, it's gotta be a five to one vote to pass. Uh, myself, yes, Wyatt?
Yes.
Caden?
Yes.
Chance?
No.
Melissa?
Yes.
And Justin?
Yes.
And motion carried five to one. All right, we'll move on then to number nineteen, activity director's report.
Today was the start of all fall sports seasons for the high schools, so, uh, all teams started practice today. The Booster Club is gonna have their kickoff next Friday, uh, normally they end down at the football field on the street, but we don't have a street anymore, so, um, we're gonna start down there with football and then end in the Tardan Gym is where they're gonna do everything afterwards. Uh, so football, go first, then cross country, then volleyball's gonna play O'Neal that night and then have supper in the Tardan Gym, they're gonna do food and stuff. Our band heads to Grand Island on August twenty-fifth, they're gonna be marching through the state fair again this year. Uh, this will be the first competition with their new uniforms, actually marching, so that'll be exciting. Uh, first competition, cross country is on August twenty-eighth, uh, football plays the twenty-ninth, and volleyball's first games are on the thirtieth. Scoreboard wise, uh, we're moving it from the northwest corner to the southwest corner of the track. Uh, footings are gonna get poured either Wednesday or Thursday, electrical is going to get ran on Thursday, and the structure is supposed to be dropped off tomorrow, so hopefully, fingers crossed, by the end of next week, we have a scoreboard up in the air. Jeremy already hit on the road, being the fence, having to be pulled out on the southwest corner to get water off the track, um, and concreting up to that. Pirate Gym had the floor refinished, so everything's done inside. Um, and then an update with the P B C F, we had a, a meeting about the football field, the practice area and whatnot, so P B C F's meeting again on the twenty-eighth to talk about the location of the community building and where that's gonna go. Um, and then after that location's determined, we have a lot, a lot better options of what's gonna happen with all that area, so that's where we're at.
Okay. Number twenty, and we'll move on to the principal's report.
I just wanna highlight and celebrate the fact that our grant was approved, so I'm super excited about the work that we did in the elementary to help with our reading needs, and so we're excited to get the ball rolling with that. That's very, yeah.
Is this still a year, that, that's the governor's initiative for reading, or is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's ongoing.
That's till like twenty thirty.
Twenty thirty?
Yeah.
Jen participated, yeah, with consortium, the schools and E S U, uh, she was a leader in that uh, process, uh, to help secure tho, those grant funds that she's kind of been talking about the past couple of months, but, uh, it, it was, it was funded, uh, so that obviously helps with the reading initiative and, uh, and saves taxpayers, you know, some money, because those materials were needed anyway, I mean, we, we, we needed those materials and, and Jen worked to help find funds to get it there.
Nice work, yeah.
Yeah, that was significant, saved the districts.
We spent a day last week kind of learning about C K L A, and we, a lot of our day tomorrow is learning about Hagerty, and there are so many things that these programs bring to our school district and for the kids that we are very excited to see the growth.
I've also kind of been in denial that school's starting this week. Have you sent anything out for their demographics, or is that system up and running?
Uh, we problem solved several things today, actually, so I would say check back tomorrow to see.
No.
That things are.
I've been in denial, I'm not ready.
Yeah, how is that new system?
We have one form that we can't get signatures to work on right now.
Yeah.
Um, other than that, I think it's been working pretty well.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, I know, when I filled out my kid's stuff, it gives you the option to fill it out for all three kids, so I only had to do it once, it was phenomenal.
Yep, I didn't get that until the fourth kid. But I talked to, I talked to a lot of the elementary parents that stuff by an open house tonight, and ninety percent of them are on board or have taken care of the forms and appreciated the convenience of it.
Okay, so since we figured it out on the first kid, can help me clear it out?
Scroll down to the bottom, there's a, a tab that says this applies to all family members, and you wanna click that.
Because you can submit, submit for all family members, or delete, don't delete. Submit for all.
Your two building secretaries have been phenomenal along the process, too, Tammy, I sat in my office and, and tried to enter data for, for my, uh, student and found a couple of forms along the way, called her, I says, hey, this one has got a required field and it, and I don't need to put it, she went in and fixed it right away, so, and we've hopefully, problem solved a couple of things that'll help some of our families that maybe haven't filled them out yet. Uh, Tammy's been a student in this thing, I mean, so the, the gals that, that take care of, of these two principals are exceptional uh, administrative assistants.
And hopefully, once everything starts with school-wise, the messaging, messaging system should be up and running too, where parents can start conversation with teachers, teachers conversate back and forth, and it's like a two-way message system. Instead of having to find emails, put all that together, it's just a quick conversation back and forth, so. Should all be up and running.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, guys. Twenty-one president's report, we've got the welcome back meal, staff recognition tomorrow night at, at the Country Club, does that start, what time is it?
Well, six o'clock, uh, come at five thirty for social half hour. And, uh, six o'clock, hopefully our coaches will, will make it before we're all done out there, but, uh, the caterer will be ready at six.
Yeah, we've got, uh, Dr. Al, Kelly with a ten-year, Tammy, Hozie with a twenty-year, and Miss Rosa with thirty-five-year awards tomorrow night, so, um, you guys, you're all welcome to that, spouses can come as well if you want, they're gonna pay for the meal, but, are welcome.
I apologize, I will not be making it.
Understood.
And then the, uh, twenty-seventh, on Wednesday, is our N A S B meeting, regional meeting in Port, that's also the same night we've got our C M selection, so, Carl and us three will not be able to go, but if any of you other guys would like to go, certainly. That's one we try, that's one we do try to everybody to make, you know, if possible, so we encourage you to still go. I don't, when you, you need to have registered.
Yeah, I would like to get you registered, uh, you should have received something from N A S B on that, they pushed that out, but I'll forward that information to you tomorrow, again, just the details, times, uh, breakout sessions, opportunities, it's, it's a, it's like a four o'clock start. Uh, you finish with a meal and some awards, and you're done by, you're done at home by eight. But it's good to support N A S B, uh, when they come to the neighborhood.
Long election February tenth, is that what we're?
Well, that, that's what's proposed, March is blackout date now, so, um, that'll be a decision that you, you know, yet, yet to be formalized and made, but, uh, did talk to Bob and Derek, and, and they said that's totally doable now, uh, that would mean a December resolution, but that was the, the date that was your target date anyway, uh, that you made, uh, the end of July, that, you know, you made a, your resolution in, in December, you're good for a February mailing.
If it's not February, then it goes to July?
Uh, it goes to May, goes to the primary.
Yeah.
General election, then in May.
Goes to the, yeah, the primary May.
And if we don't make May, then it would go to July, then is that right? Or is it August?
Can't be two months after, it's two months after.
I believe, I believe it's still, where you got a special then. Uh, nothing would happen until the next spring if you're any time past May. Uh, February would still be advantageous if you feel you're, you're, you're okay, because they would really be able to get a good start uh, on anything, you know, before winter, so you, you'd really get a good head start and put yourself in a position to be done uh, summer twenty-eight for school year twenty-eight, twenty-nine, so, uh, so just that should now be on your radar, we've been thinking maybe March, 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 March for many months, and the legislature in May snuck in a, uh, an additional blackout month for a special election, so February is, is, is a very doable option on the table.
Can we make that decision? Like, when do we decide when we wanna have that ultimate election?
Pass a resolution in December.
If you feel it's ready in December.
So I know that, but like, when do we make that decision, that that's what we wanna do? Or do we wanna wait till the primary, we're still, because we're still excited if we wanna do a normal, you know, the primary election or a special election?
How was, we talked about that last meeting.
Okay, I wasn't here, so, we're, so we've decided on one of them.
Well, we're on course for that right now, and if we hit snag or something, then I guess we'll decide.
So we're super, you're not locked in? Super, super special election.
Super special election, that's where that was your hardest time.
No, I understand, I, I knew that decision was made.
Well, it's not, if, if the road that we're on, let's just say it's not, maybe not.
It's the time, yeah, it'll change, it's not the path that we're on right now, so.
And then, uh, I was informed today that, uh, Osborne Board is kind of thinking joint meeting with Plainview's Board to discuss activities um, sometime possibly like the seventeenth of, uh, September, if they don't have it out there, but obviously before that would happen, we'd have to get our sharing meeting back together and discuss with us how that meeting went, whoever's concerned, we wouldn't want it to, you know, get into facilities, we want to keep it directly on activity sharing, so, we've gotta work those details out. Maybe that would be, you know, it might be all right to do that, just so we don't have, well, this is what Plainview said, this is what Osborne said, we're both here again.
Yeah, shared committee can get together sometime, let's just say this month anyway. Maybe we can still have our regular board meeting and give everybody a, on the board an update, you know, on how that went, and then have a.
I have some, some information from Osborne's board meeting tonight. Uh, they, they are asking at, uh, Sunday, the seventh of September, for the committee, that is the day before your, your September eighth board meeting, so if the committees can get together on Sunday the seventh, and then a joint school board, community meeting on the seventeenth, that's a Wednesday, uh, both at six thirty. Uh, they did approve girls wrestling and bowling tonight, six oh each. So that would be part of the conversation I would expect potentially for this school year, but, um, would, is the seventh, you know, it's a Sunday evening, the seventh, night before your regular board meeting, you should be able to report out on the eighth, early board meeting in September, be able to report out, you know, the committee conversation, and then joint board meeting, community meeting. Go to Osborne on the seventh, in Plainview, Pirate Gym on the seventeenth.
Are we gonna get those comfortable chairs again?
Maybe, maybe we'll, maybe the Tardan, the Tardan might actually be.
But potentially, yes, yes, Justin, not, not quite as comfortable to sit for our guests, but you're, every, yeah, the noise is a little bit.
Yeah, what is later days?
Later days is the first.
Quite about the choices, isn't it? I can make it work.
I can make it work.
I can, you know.
Yeah, we need, we need to set, you know, some guidelines, yeah.
Well, we need to know exactly what, what, what we're proposing, you know?
Yeah, so we can bring it back.
So, it's a prudent, yeah, so, we wanna make sure the focus is sharp, and, yeah, it's a, very, with an agenda.
So that's on the radar.
Are you, uh, do, do I hear you say that I can confirm that the seventh is, is good, the seventeenth may, will be determined on the seventh, that the committees will confirm whether that, but then it has to be a, a prior notice, the seventeenth, it'd have to be a notice for the paper, that's why, which would, uh, need to be that week's paper after, the week of the seventh, would need to be that week's paper if you wanna be, have a.
Yeah, we can talk about it the night of the seventh, we can talk about it on the, until the rest of the board members, to, yep, make sure they work for everybody here, right?
The one, I'm sorry.
On the eighth, hey, you can talk about it.
Yes, yes.
We can talk about it on the eighth, make sure it works for everybody, that gives us enough time to get in there, almost nine days.
That's all I've got. Number twenty-two, superintendent report.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, the C M walk-through was on seven twenty-nine, it was pretty exciting, uh, as I mentioned to you, and I think I pushed out a couple of pictures, just a couple of details about that, so, um,
So and then I've had two others contact me personally and come and had their own private, quasi-private walkthrough and that's been just fine. We did hire Joanne Ubls for kitchen staff because we, we lost two gals this summer. Joanne comes with great experience working in an industrial kitchen. So we're, we're very, very happy to have her. The, the eighth forever Pirates golf event, Brooke did a good job getting story in the paper, pictures in the paper. That's just a win-win-win. The alumni win, the foundation wins, which means the kids win. We've got sixteen thousand dollars in scholarships as a result of that event over the past six years. The course wins because alumni tend to frequent the bar. So, so that's good. So that's been a great event. Had a good meeting with the foundation just prior to this meeting about the future of that and maybe some, maybe, you know, some, some minor tweaks and adjustments and also our scholarship process. So we had a, a safety walk with local police, fire and EMTs through our building the other night, a week or two, a week and a half ago. Both chiefs and myself and Gail was present and kind of helped kind of lead a tour of all our facilities. We wanted them to, you know, get, get eyes on the building, took a few suggestions from them. We've also already implemented those with regard to notifications around the building. We also had Trooper Bratton here. So that's good. We're going to do that every year. Just kind of get connected, keep connected, stay connected and, you know, get eyes on the building. Think through some things with us with regards to the safety of our students and staff. And your enrollment summary is robust. Again, this is our highest enrollment that we've had in many, many years. Now, we had a little fluidity, you know, of students, but enrollment is, is growing. Now, it's not something we necessarily brag about, but the fact that we don't have a declining enrollment in a small girl's school is, is, is something to be, you know, pretty proud of. So you're, we were three hundred and fifteen students nine years ago. We're three sixty-five, you know. So that, that's encouraging, really encouraging. So strong preschool class, Jen, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, we're, we're still not seeing that class of sixteen and seventeen or twelve, you know, come through our preschool where we know this is going to kind of ripple through. We keep getting twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-six. First grade is thirty.
Our elementary population is over two hundred again.
Yeah, Jen's building is, is pretty doggone full. So, and they're, they're coming. That's a good thing, very positive thing. So that is all I have, if you have, unless you have any questions.
It says administrator tape day tidbits.
Yeah.
That was okay. I'll just, could you, the teaching with AI, was that, was that something they talked about or can you elaborate on that?
I.
I just, I guess I, I just see that. We're going, we're going, we're going down that road.
Yes.
Be aware of all of these tools.
And that, that has a risen to a top, top priority of our facility needs and how AI, how we might need to think about how we need to prepare our kids in a world of AI in a, a, a school that is fifty and seventy and a hundred years old. So I, I, I'm not going to try to make something up and speak to what I learned at administrator days about AI because I'm going to probably kind of let these two be the future of AI at Plainview Public Schools. But we've made a good step already with your investment in brisk, which is kind of to, to help our teachers. Because I mean, they're, they're the ones that need to get more comfortable and try not to get too far behind where our kids are. But yeah, that, that's something that we, we probably really want to try to think about as well as almost a curricular area. Pal talked maybe last, was it last month, thinking about a maker space area. AI would maybe fit into that. That's a, that's a new, newer generational concept that public schools have, a maker space. But AI is not designed to just once, to one space for sure. So I'm not going to be your expert ever on AI in public education.
Field is moving very quickly.
Yeah.
Very fast.
I actually went to that session and one of the things that fascinated me was one of the AI apps that creates music and the ability to make a song about Plainview Pirates. That's what I spent some of my time doing, was putting in some things about Plainview Pirates and it generated a song boasting about all the things that we can boast about. So there were lots of things there and it was very overwhelming for me because I hadn't used them before. But yes, there is definitely a wealth of information out there and it's just a matter of us sharing that with everybody else around us.
Any social media platform, you get a, you're Bigfoot, you can do anything for it.
That's great.
So I mean, it's, yeah, it's.
There's never.
How fast that happened.
Yeah.
We went from ad to now you just, yeah. You almost can't believe things anymore.
Actually, another one that I went to was taking legislation and translating it to language that we can understand.
That's awful.
And. I mean, I just tried to get in there and navigate it myself and I struggled there, but.
Also now you're interested in AI.
It was mesmerizing.
Not so much. I'm going to try to get.
Well, I, I. Personally, I'm excited. I, I use it a fair bit or I, I highly encourage you to continue, obviously, keep, keep a track on it because it's, it's, it's going fast. And we're, these kids are going to enter this workforce of this world and they're either going to outpace the teachers here and that's dangerous to a point, or, or they're going to enter the world and not utilize these tools or resources.
Okay, well, thanks for that report and that's all we got for the night.
Okay, but can we help with that pirate game?
See if we can come up with.
You can have it. You can have it anywhere.
You can do anything.
I'm with you, Justin. Anytime I see a video on the internet, I'm like, I don't even know if I should anymore.